Right now, next year we'll be able to do whatever.
Well, plus they lost them.
Good morning, everyone. I'm on the call to order our September 4th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. As with all meetings, we start off the indication. Ms. Ostersteghras has agreed to provide that for us this morning.
Thank you. Pray with me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, as we assemble here this morning, we're just in awe of your grace and your mercy to us. We ask that you be with us now as we conduct the business of the county, that we would do it with what was pleasing in your sight, Lord. I just pray for all those that are sick and need of your loving care. Be with them, be with those that are in the path of the storm gordon, that you would protect them. We just, again, thank you for all that you do for us, for loving us so dearly, and we ask all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ostersteghras. Any public comments, Ms. Janis?
No.
All right, we're moving on. There are no public comments. Number four, all business. So move, Mr. Cross. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consider agenda. Motion by Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Slade.
This is our public hearing on our proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. At this time, we will open our public hearing on the matter of the consideration of the fiscal year 2019 budget, and I'll ask if there is anyone here this morning to speak on the issue of the proposed budget.
That's the kind of budget we like to see.
Mr. President, we do have one submission that has been made that I want to accommodate for the purposes of the record. It's a written letter from Mr. Henry Wood, who lives in Grandeur subdivision in Brandon. That's inside the city limits of Brandon. It's also my neighbor across the street, so I say hello to Mr. Wood this morning. Good morning, sir. How are you? And so I wanted to accommodate that for the purposes of the record. Mr. Wood is making a recommendation on a couple of matters. Number one, he's commenting on the issue of the notice that was in the paper of the proposed tax increase, and I want to take this occasion to point out the difficulty that the state statute gives to us at the county level especially with respect to how those notices have to be run in the newspaper. So I wanted to take this opportunity on the record to say again to our state legislators, Mr. Wood is a victim of the way that you drafted the statute that we have to run in the newspaper. It makes it appear as though the county is raising taxes, and that is simply not the case. As you all know, we have a flat budget. We did not raise taxes at all, but because we have to print it in the newspaper as a notice of tax increase, even though it's not, that's the most ridiculous requirement I've ever seen, and it's part and parcel of why we get into trouble with our constituents. And it's not our own fault. Somebody else is getting us in trouble or getting us sideways with our constituents. So let the record reflect that the county is not raising taxes. While Mr. Wood has some concerns about the amount of property taxes that are now levied on his property, I mentioned that he's inside the city limits of the city of Brandon, and I want to point to that as one of the areas where there could be some tax implication for his property, and while he's here, it would be appropriate to take advantage of that opportunity. The city of Brandon is considering a tax increase, and so I would encourage Mr. Wood to look further into that. The component parts of the taxes for properties that are inside the city of Brandon would be the county, the school district, and the city of Brandon. There may be some additional water association type things that could come into play, but for the most part, those are the three component parts. To my knowledge, there are two parts of those potential taxes that are going up. One is the school district because it passed a bond issue that was voted on, and the second is the city of Brandon if they in fact raised taxes. And so that would be the two places that you would want to look. The county is not raising taxes. Mr. Wood also addresses through a state law that was passed in 2011, a question about whether or not we are checking to make sure that when people get their license plates here in Rankin County, that they show proof of insurance. And so my tax collectors here will make sure we're doing as good a job as we can to check the proof of insurance at the time we issue tags. It is a state law that says that. There are no teeth in the law. There's no penalty for not doing it, but I think it's a good form to do that. Having seen no one else present to speak on the matter of the budget, we will close that public hearing, and I believe later on in the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to vote on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Mr. Sullivan.
Item A, order approving the 2018 recapitulation of the real and personal property assessments.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Sullivan.
And item B, I made an error on the agenda. Instead of Uniform Standards of Professional Practices, the course is called Marshall and Swift Cost Approach.
So motion, we'll make a motion to change that there?
To add it.
Motion to change it by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion, motion approved by Mr. Morrison. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Onward to Mr. Harrison.
I make a motion to approve roadwork accomplished in 18. Roadwork scheduled in September, August.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else right here, Mr. Harrison?
Just want to kind of update y'all on where we're going to be at. Looks like we've got some weather coming in. We're going to stagger a few crews tonight, be on standby in case we have emergencies in the county, so we have a little more response to that. And we're going to kind of ship work out through tonight, and then we'll have all crews back on board for tomorrow if we get impacted. So just wanted to let y'all know. So if y'all need anything in here, give us a call. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Onwards to Mr. Parker. Different Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both items we have on the agenda, A and B, were placed contingent upon the developer providing a commitment letter from the local water association to serve. At this time, we don't have that letter, so we're recommending no action on items A or B.
All right. Do you do anything there, right, Mr. Slade?
Yes, sir. Just to reflect on the record, no actions taken on items A and B.
All right, Mr. Slade, back to you, Mr. Slade.
Good job, Tim.
I believe we can take A through E together?
Looks like we can. Those are all public hearings, and they have to do with conditional uses or other zoning type action.
I make a motion to set these public hearings from A through E.
Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Slade. Onward to number F.
This is a public hearing on the Warren Zachary Edwards conditional use permit at 240 Poplar Street. Warren Zachary Edwards is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2018 16 by 80 manufactured home as a second dwelling on his grandmother's property at 240 Poplar Street. This is a two acre parcel that's zoned RMX. Manufactured homes are allowed in the RMX zone with one dwelling per parcel. In the past, there have been two manufactured homes on this property, but one has since been removed. This time, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Warren Zachary Edwards conditional use application. Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Onward to G, please.
This is the public hearing on the Amy Smith conditional use permit, 2844 Highway 43 South, District 3. Amy Smith is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2018 28 by 56 manufactured home at 2844 Highway 43. This will be a second dwelling on a 10.86 acre parcel zoned A2. The home is for her elderly mother. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Amy Smith conditional use permit request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion to approve. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. H, please.
H is our public hearing that has been set for some time on our local nonhazardous solid waste management plan, the proposed amendment that will allow for the expansion of the Mount Helm pit that's currently in operation. This is the 20 acre site that's being added to Mr. Foshee's pit at Southern Environmental Group. They've made application. All of the notices have been made. All of the publication requirements have been met, and at this time, I'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the amendment to the Rankin County Solid Waste Management Plan. Is there anyone here to speak on that? See, Mr. Foshee, is counsel here? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that. Obviously, the applicants here, if you have questions, otherwise, it'd be appropriate to close that public hearing and take action.
Make a motion to close it. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Aye, please.
Item A, set long list of things here that has to do with our Lakeland Income situation. This is your final acknowledgment of receipt of the Mississippi Supreme Court order that orders Rankin County to reimburse Lakeland Income Properties for a real property abhorrent taxes paid during a given period of time because, according to the Supreme Court, the property is exempt from taxes by virtue of 61321 per N3. And so I'm asking you to acknowledge receipt of that court order, and I'm asking you to authorize a county administrator to issue a check to Lakeland Income Properties LLC to reimburse for the abhorrent taxes associated with those PIN numbers that you see there for the requisite period of time until such time as that tax exemption no longer applies.
Did we ever discuss how we're getting repaid?
At this time, it would be appropriate, I think, to at least enter into some sort of formal discussion on that so that you can direct your staff on how to handle that.
I make a motion to approve paying our portion of check.
How we're going to get our money back?
He said our portion.
Our portion. I'm not going to fight the court. I'm not getting to the match with the court on which part of the check we go send. The court says Rankin County, we're going to send. He said my budget says we're going to send them a check for everything we've got, what we're supposed to send them for. Now, if we want to serve the superintendent of education with the letter via the sheriff saying, making a demand letter, that's fine, but I'm not playing the game with the court.
So here's the legalities of it. We are the defendant in the court case. The Supreme Court has ordered us as the defendant to issue this reimbursement. We have an agreement with multiple jurisdictions, Flowood, Brandon Pearl, Richland, John can help me with others, but we have agreements to collect. I said, John, she's the collector. I get that backwards sometimes. Forgive me. So we have agreements in place that say, hey, Flowood, hey, school district, we will collect the abhorrent on your behalf and remit your portion to you, and there are mechanisms for accounting for that cost associated with this small, it's a modest cost, but there's mechanisms to deal with that. That's our arrangement with the, if we're going to get our money back, it will be by virtue of that contract that we have to collect. I haven't read it word for word down through the contract, but my suggestion to you is that there would be language in there that says if we ever have to reimburse somebody, we get to collect your part of that reimbursement back from either you directly or from later proceeds that come in on your behalf. Okay? So we'll have mechanisms to collect that back from who owes, which in this case would be Flowood and the school district.
Make a motion to pay it.
Yeah, I don't see how we can help.
And then deal with the other.
Yeah, we're going to have to deal with it, but.
Our administrative process.
Well, the last time we discussed it, we were saying we were going to pay one and not the other. That's not fair either.
No.
I mean, either we pay them all or we pay none.
Pay them all.
I don't know about, but how have, has anybody spoke to, has any discussion with Flowood?
Not with Flowood, no. Not that I'm aware of. Certainly not me. I don't think the floor has.
They're the only ones affected. It's in the city of Flowood.
I thought you listed off several of them.
Well, the school district and Flowood both.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought when you listed them.
My suggestion is, let's see if we can't come to some kind of, reach out to them so we can come to understand between now and February 1, but let them know come February 1, if we hadn't gotten anything from it, we're going to withhold. You know, if they want to get back to us and stop us then, then they can come to us and see, I would think.
We pretty much.
Give them five months, they've got a plan. I mean, I'm not saying get the money by then, but they need to say, hey, we'll do it in the next FYI or at the end of FYI.
Why February?
That's when we're going to have our remittance.
Well, that's just where taxes are coming in. We'll write checks to.
I thought that was at the, towards the end of them.
Whatever you, I don't care if it's February. I mean, there was need.
I think we reach out before then.
Huh? Yeah, I mean, that's where most money's coming in.
We can probably deal with it.
We got a motion in a second.
I don't care. So there is a motion by Mr. Gaines to go ahead and pay it. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
We're paying the full amount.
Full amount.
That's on here right now.
Full amount. That's what I consider. As it is in the agenda.
232 and change. I don't have the exact.
And get reimbursed.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
If I may, Mr. President, may I suggest, may I please refer back to an issue that's sort of sitting there, and I think it's my own fault for not, I know it's my own fault for not having asked it to be on the agenda under my section right here, and I didn't see it under any other sections, but we need to go back and reconsider or talk through this issue of the abhorrent exemption request that came from our friends at GI Associates. We've got to get an answer on that. John is doing, may have already done the titulation, I'm not sure, but we've got to make sure we address that.
Do you need to add that to the agenda?
We need to add that discussion and potential action on GI Associates exemption request.
Motion by Mr. Bishop to add it. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right, Mr. Slade.
So where we are is this. There is an exemption that's in place for the health care zone law that was created back in 2014. Our friends at GI and Associates have gone through a process of moving from the city of Jackson over to Rankin County and Flowood. They built a big building there. They did that under the governor's health care zone law, which allows for several accommodations for them, most of them at the state level, but it's related to the size of the building and the economic impact that it's going to have, and the number of jobs it's going to create, and all those kind of economic development types of incentive packages that you see typically at the state level. Embedded in that law was also the ability of an applicant to secure local abhorrent tax exemptions. They still have to come to us and request them, and there is a minimum amount of requirements that they have to meet in order to qualify for them, and we, this board, relies on Rankin first to sort of police that and help a shepherd through that and make sure that those guys really do qualify for the exemption. We were told early on in the process that they would qualify. The city of Flowood gave them the exemption early, committed to it early on. Obviously, they were trying to get them into the city of Flowood, and they were anxious about that, and they did that. But since then, some things have happened that have raised questions, and we pulled it off the table for consideration last board meeting to give us time to kind of really look at it more clearly and understand what had happened. What happens, what happened was that in January, when they applied finally for the abhorrent tax exemption, everything was fine. It looked just like it should. And then in May, I'm sorry, in June, after Flowood had granted the exemption in May or on June 1, Flowood granted the exemption on June 1, on June 14, the entity GI and Associates transferred ownership of all of their real property to an entity that is not in the health care business. It's an entity that is in the real estate development, what's called a real estate investment trust business, which is essentially, it's a marketable security is what it is. And so the question immediately got raised, it was after Flowood granted it, but before we had a chance to consider the application, we had a total change of ownership. I reached out to MDA and told them, this is what we're faced with. What is your recommendation here? Do you think that they still qualify for the abhorrent exemption? And the response that I got back is, not surprisingly, well, what do y'all think? What do y'all think about it? And unfortunately, they're in a position where they are looking at only a minimum amount of the qualifiers for the purpose of what clears the law. It's really up to us to decide whether or not we're going to give them the exemption or not, and their position on it is, it sounds like they may not qualify, and there are other jurisdictions that we're aware of who have made the exact same finding that y'all are considering, that they don't qualify. There are other jurisdictions that have done that, and then there are other jurisdictions that have said, no, they still qualify. So it's kind of on both sides of the fence here. There's, again, uncertainty, but it's going to be totally within y'all's purview to decide whether or not to grant the exemption. There is a question as to whether or not the law as written would make this situation an unqualified request. There's a question on that. I can argue both ways, okay? Because the law is not 100% clear. Imagine that. And so either way you go on this, you will be able to argue and support your decision either way. It really comes down to what y'all want. A thought that I had, and I may have made this suggestion to you guys to be thinking about, would be to give them a one-year exemption and ask them to go back to MDA in their current state of ownership and request a recertification from MDA, which would then clear the hurdle that I have as to whether or not it's a qualifying entity asking for the exemption.
But why do we need to give them the one-year exemption? Why don't we just say you need to go back?
Couple of different things. When they ask for the exemption and Flowood granted it, which would be, that would be the first hurdle that we would want to see cleared, where there's a city involved, that the city actually gave it, they got the exemption. Of course, that was before they made the transaction. So you've got Flowood sitting out there with an exemption granted, and then us in a box trying to figure out what to do.
Craig, the email you sent us from MDA, I thought the one that said they turned down the exemption was they sold it and also changed the use rather than using it as a medical facility.
Yeah, actually, they didn't change the use as a medical facility. They changed the ownership from someone that was no longer a medical provider, but they still had the same, they just leased it. It's very similar to what we got here, Jay. Very similar to what we have here. The owner of the facility is not doing anything with the facility other than leasing it to the very doctors who have asked for the request. That's another reason why it makes it closer.
Well, one of them that she said did approve it, that was exactly what happened, was what happened here. Matter of fact, I thought she was talking about us whenever she referenced that.
Yeah.
I mean, truthfully, though, they're going to be back in here asking for it.
Oh, it's no question.
And I think they built their building over here with the understanding that they were going to get this exemption because the state passed the law.
I know they did, but then they didn't realize the law.
They're still operating as the same.
They moved on.
But they're still there.
The use of the.
I'm saying they moved, they sold to someone else. That's the part they didn't realize was the, was the.
But I think for the clarification side, they can just swap ownerships back to whoever they want. They can name it whatever company. If they see we turn it down, they'll just go back and flip it, change the name back to.
I don't know why they did what they did anyway.
I don't either, unless it's something.
I mean. They can make their way back into the right wording to meet the.
It's a tax structure.
It's a tax issue, the reason they moved it.
It was a big time tax structure. It was a windfall to the property owners and a big tax advantage to be in a leasehold situation. So what's, to Bob's point that I think Bob made accurately, so I have no doubt that the owners, the principals of GI and Associates that are now under lease with this entity out of somewhere in Wisconsin, they are in a situation where they are, it's called a triple net lease, and so property taxes becomes a component part of that monthly lease obligation. The way that their lease is structured now, it's more than likely, it's accounting for a tax exemption that's been built in. So if we deny the request, the owners, the overlords in Wisconsin are going to see that now they have a property tax obligation, and they will amend the lease to require the principals here locally to pay now the proportional share of the abhorrent tax impact as part of their lease obligation. You will definitely hear from the locals because they will feel it directly in their pocketbooks. Let me make no mistake about that. So this is going to set up a domino effect. My suggestion of giving them the year and requiring them to go back to MDA puts it back in MDA's court to decide whether or not a real estate investment trust qualifies for an abhorrent tax exemption under the health care zone law when they're not in the health care business. We really need that to be, so MDA sitting in the seat going, nobody's asked us. We qualified them when they weren't. Nobody's asked us. We don't go back and requalify. So if we give the exemption and say any further exemptions beyond this year is conditioned on you're getting a recertification from MDA, that puts the burden back on MDA to make the call.
I'm good with that.
I'm going to get the first one.
Do what?
Yeah, I mean, we're just prolonging what we're going to do anyway, and why don't we do what we said we were going to do and revise our exemption?
I think we need to do that. I mean, we're going to go ahead and do it this year because we're already into it, but going forward, we need to come up with a policy that at least we can keep road and bridge out of or some form, because the city of Flowood is getting hopefully some benefit through sales tax revenue, whatever the case, by bringing people over. We get zilch. I mean, nothing, because we need something, kind of like a TIF. That's what this is essentially, is a form of a TIF.
And that's where we came up with our TIF policy so that we could, you know.
I firmly believe it.
Can I say one more thing?
You guys suggest, John?
Yes, sir.
You guys suggestions?
John, why don't you let me suggest, because I'm fixing to suggest something I think you'll like. The law doesn't mandate anybody to get an exemption. I'm looking at the five guys right here that can say, you know what? There's no gravy in this for us. We're not giving it. That's where the rubber's going to meet the road. There is no mandate that you have to give it. We do have those. They're out there, but this is not one, okay? So you don't have to do anything.
The problem is. The problem is it seems like the ones that can afford it are the ones that get the exemptions every time, and that's all I hear. I mean, you know, the ones that got the big money get the exemption.
At some point, we need to recognize a couple of things. This is just me, this is not advice. It's just me pontificating, so take it for what it's worth. Rankin County is still a draw. It's still bringing in businesses and population. So somebody tell me where there's a need for a lot of incentive, right? We're still getting them. They're still coming. People want to come here. I don't know that we need to really get hung up on incentives. Now, my economic development people are going to tell you, you got to make sure that we're competitive in the incentive market. I get that. For the big stuff, I get that, and I would suggest that's where we really need to focus.
They're not the ones trying to balance the budget every year.
You're exactly right.
And realizing you're closer and closer to a problem.
That's the issue, Jared, that I see.[1653.44]
I mean, that's where I.
The request for services is going up. The cost of delivering the services is going up, but we're still trying to figure out ways to not go up on our taxes. And it's getting harder and harder.
And we're getting the rooftops that think, but the rooftops don't pay those taxes. It's the corporate businesses that come in here that pay avalorum for us to, yeah, keep us from having to go up on taxes.
We're very limited in our revenue. That's right.
But everybody thinks more rooftops we're getting, we've got more tax dollars we've got coming in. That's not the case.
So, on the table really, I think, is, is y'all either just granting the exemption outright, which would give them an additional nine. They were a year late, so they lost a year. That would give them nine total years of avalorum exemption. Or you could give them a piece of it, I'm suggesting a year, and tell them to go to MDA and get requalified. Or you can just say, no exemption, period.
I'm not, I'm, I just need to know. They go back, should have required, should have got it right the first time.
The best I'll do is, is Slay's option, the one-year deal. That gives us time to reorganize our plan. I like the mindset of the policy we got in place on the TIF side of it. So, I mean, I'm fine with the one-year.
I don't know if you can do that, though, Kim. Can we come back and?
Yeah, after one year.
Yes, we can condition.
Well, I mean, if they don't do something.
Yes, sir. So, the way it works here, it is, you get one year. If you get further years, it's conditioned on your securing a recertification from MDA.
And/or our new policy.
Or our new policy that we got in place. That's what needs to happen.
Well, with some new policy, we're gonna get something out of it. I'm tired of this. Us getting zero. I mean, you catch bad, I mean, it's bad for the public realizing, you know, you get nothing out of, not out of all these places.
Somebody pays the bill. When they come here, there's, there's more suppliers delivering to them, more trucks leaving and coming, more people, more rooftop, more people in schools. Somebody pays the bill, and when we say that they are exempt, it means those businesses that we already have around here, we're just gonna pay more.
That's right.
And I think we should do it, I'd give them that year and have a policy where we can at least take care of our roads or something.
That's right.
That sounds hard, but there are no free lunches, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Someone will make a motion.
Yeah, that's fine, for one year, and then we come back and reassess it based on our new policies or whatever we want to do. But one year only, they go back and reapply to MDA, we come back and revisit it a year this time and see where we're at.
Do you agree with that, Jessica? How you got that done? All right, there's a motion, Mr. Cross, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Nay.
Vote, no?
Nay.
Nay. On the three to two vote, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Morrison are the nay. Motion carries. Leave on, Mrs. Slay.
Okay, that's all from me.
All right, Ms. Oster.
First item I have is approval to adopt the FYI 2019 budget in the amount of $168,712,344. This is about an eight million decrease from our last year's budget, and that amount is typically the amount that we have spent out of our $25 million bond issued toward our projects.
There are motions to approve. First, Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. B, please, ma'am.
Authority to publish the combined budget for publication. That's the, one sheet that will reflect the amount I just gave you.
Motion by myself, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. C, please.
Authority to adopt the FYI 19 tax levy of 40.24 mils for the county taxes, which represents a zero mil increase over last year, and 55, 56.55 mils for the Rankin County School District, which is also a zero increase over last year, and authority to publish.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion?
I guess all the, the school taxes went on last year.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Oster.
This is approval of pay application number 14 to Chris Albritton Construction. This is for our new courthouse in the amount of $199,525.36, and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please.
Authority to publish notification requirements of MCA 27-39-203 required during a reappraisal year in order to receive their home state exemption, reimbursement funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to appraise, second by myself, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And F, please.
Ratification of authority to purchase stamps in the amount of $182.81 out of our petty cash in order to mail all county departments mail on August 31 due to a breakdown of our postage meter.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Oster, under your section?
No, sir.
Bye, ma'am. Mr. Slay.
Additional business? We've got Jim Turner here, probably wants to talk to you guys about a couple of road projects working on.
Hey, one thing before he comes up. I was gonna get Mike to give us a quick EOC briefing on the weather stuff coming in. Mike, you got two seconds? Sixty seconds.
Two. Man, you gotta be nuts.
Morris, it's absolutely impossible.
I got him, I got him on the clock.
I understand. Over the course of the last 12 hours, the tropical storm Gordon has not, they thought it was gonna give some time to strengthen up. It has not strengthened, which is good for us. However, we are still on the right side of the storm, which means we could possibly get some of the multiple spin-up tornadoes and things of that nature. We'll just have to sit back and watch it and see. We do have a weather briefing at 11:00 this morning with the National Weather Service. I do not know why they're going at 11:00 because the National Hurricane Service does theirs at 11:00. So, we will not have the most accurate information, but we'll get that around 12:00. I do want to allude to one thing. I did send you guys an email out yesterday, and I don't want you to take the, me not pushing these emails out to you every 25 minutes as a disregard from the EOC. We are on top of it. We are looking at it. But when I send you an email, I want you to read it. And I don't, I don't want to be inundating you guys with, we had a two mile an hour increase in the wind, and it shifted one degree to the left as an update. When I send you an update, it's a real deal. I'm gonna give you the latest and greatest of what we're getting from the National Weather Service, and we'll go from there. Really quick, two other notes. We have had requests from Department of Homeland Security and MEMA. Both of those requests, at this point, have been denied to send our people to, some over to MEMA to man the State Operations Center, have denied those requests, and also the request to send people and assets to the coast. The reason for that is, is we are right in the middle of the, I'm gonna call it the improbability cone, and I just don't think it's prudent for Rankin County to send Rankin County responders and Rankin County assets to another location when it appears that we're right in the middle of the possibility of needing those assets. So, once we're clear and we don't have any impact and things have settled down here in Rankin County, should something occur, then we will go back and revisit that unless, unless the board wants me to send them down there, and we'll absolutely do so. But that's where we stand at this point. We should be getting you some information out, some really good information by 1:00 today after all of these things settle down. So, I do know that MEMA is issuing EMAC numbers right now as we speak, and they're deploying folks at lunch today.
Thank you, Slay. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Loer.
All right, Mr. Turner, come on up.
It's a number to allow to deploy. They gotta be state authorized.
Any discussion, any executive session?
No, sir.
Emergency activation.
Really, we don't need all that.
You all don't.
This is all mine?
That's for you to sign.
I've got it.
Sorry about that little delay right there.
I think.
Pause for a second.
This is Andrew Chapel. I thought we were gonna give this one shot.
We are. This is the first phase we got.
We're in, we're in business right now.
He's got eight million.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
What are you doing?
Eight million.
Really?
Yeah, I got all that.
Sorry, you had to cap.
All right, Mr. Turner, how about it?
All right, guys, we, this is the first piece of the Andrew Chapel Road Improvement Project. We're planning on replacing a bridge in Culver on the north end of the project. The Andrew Chapel Project is gonna run from Tricken Bridge Road north to Baker Lane. In total, we've got about 80 parcels that are gonna be affected by the project. These are the first eight that we're gonna make offers on for the, for the relocation of the bridge in Culver. We have completed our property owner notifications, and we've met with most of the property owners on the site, probably 80% of the property owners on the whole project. So, over 65 property owners have met us on, on the, on site to discuss the project, and we have met with all, all of these landowners for the first little part of the project. We're asking for your establishment of just compensation for these eight parcels. Total just compensation for this piece of the project is $65,740, and that's what we're asking you to approve today. Two of these properties have large temporary construction easements where they're, we're gonna relocate the road temporarily on the east side of Andrew Chapel, redirect traffic on this new temporary road while they replace the bridges. After that temporary construction easement period's over, the land will revert back to the landowner. Those two properties were appraised, and they were over to the $10,000 minimum requirement for, for, for waiver valuation.
We need to add this to the agenda.
Real quick, I have a quick question to that. The Whitney, is that what that is? Is Mr. Whitney, is that, that him and Mr. Turner, it looks like?
Yes, sir. Charles Turner and William Whitney.
Yes, we need to add that to the agenda.
I think most add these items to the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. There are motions to approve. Y'all have more questions for Mr. Turner? Not the same, Mr. Turner's getting the six grand, but the separate different one.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, please, sir.
Thank you. That's it for today.
All right, we'll hold on to this, I think, I guess.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Hey, before we, Jaren, we, you know, we sat in on a meeting with PDD the other day. They had that public hearing here, and we have a call for projects coming up. We've not discussed that at all. Are we just gonna sit back and not submit anything?
Mr. Parker, I mean, do you have any suggestions about kind of where some of our projects are and how that might play into?
Could it fall into PDD?
My suggestion is, we sit down, we need to sit down and see in PDD and see which projects would qualify, because all the projects we have going, I don't think would qualify. So, they have to be in the step and so forth to qualify for this, so.
But we could get some overlay done. We've never applied for it before.
That's correct.
I would think. We ought to have something, huh?
There, yeah, there's four items, and it's bridge repair, overlay, congestion, and I think the other is traffic signal, signalization. That's the four. I've actually got some paperwork that I can hand out to you guys that you can mull over.
When's it due?
October 26 is the deadline.
So, when do we meet again, the next meeting?
14th is the next meeting for us.
So, maybe we can.
We could look at, that's like overlay, you can see.
I think overlay.
I say look at the whole spectrum of things. I mean, you never know. I mean.
Look at all of it. I mean, it's real.
They told us that, like, Andrew Chapel and Gunner Road wouldn't apply. We couldn't get any money for East Metro or West Rankin, the projects we already have ongoing. So, other than that, what, what can we put it for?
Got Lutney potentially if we broker out with Brandon. The more money we can come up with as equity, the higher we push up, you know, to get somebody's attention. But I think Lutney qualifies.
Yep. I think we did look at it and ask, I think they nodded at Lutney.
I'm not sure there, there's some restrictions about being on state aid routes particularly. I'm not sure we have to look.
Yeah, just, let's kind of look at overlay, whatever. You know what we're doing.
Same thing runs into Florence Borough from Florence out to Clear Road. The same, I mean, it's just like, same problem.
All right, anything else we need to discuss? Jay, hey, Bishop, are you done? Y'all done? Anything else?
Yeah, that was all. We talked about it on 14.
Huh?
14.
We have anything for anything else, additional business? Any thing for executive session? Is there anything else that needs to be discussed, gentlemen?
Hallelujah.
I can't believe those.
Is there a motion to recess to September 14 at 9:00 a.m. by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. See y'all next week.